We will start, we'll call it over. If you'd please join us in prayer and pledge, Mr. Ingles.
We lift up our local leaders today. We pray for our mayors, city councils, county commissioners, police chiefs, judges, and all who serve our local communities. Strengthen them with wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens they carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love, keep their hearts pure, and their eyes turn towards your face. As they work in the best interests of the people, they are called to serve. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brings us up to our first call out to the public. Anyone wish to address the board at this time? There will be another public comment at the end of the meeting. Good morning.
Good morning. Lori Boyd, I'd like to first thank you for that prayer. Very nice. And I know that you guys all work for the Constitution, and I thank you for that. And please, keep in mind the people of the community. We've got a lot of depressed people in the community, isolated people in the community, dying people in the community by themselves. I don't believe that the graphs that you have showing on the rates of the pandemic are really showing what they should be showing. I think a more accurate graph would show the rates of pneumonia and cold with each month through the past couple, three years, so we could see exactly where we are. We know that the people are diagnosed with COVID, that they didn't actually die of COVID, or it may have just been a partial diagnosis. I'd like you to consider opening up the community and also sending those letters to the state of Michigan, like the ones documented in your file today from other counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address at this time? You can never pass up an opportunity.
I can't ever. Again, Robert.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, call again. As what she was stating, you know, yeah, our community is really, say, suffering, the county, anybody and anywhere is. But I, to address these ideas of having new monies, I think maybe if you really take the budget, start looking at the about 2.74, a negative 2.74. This would give a lot of avenue for these people who have strived. We've raised their taxes, and they're gone through all this hell trying to make a life, getting through this pandemic and all the other worrisome things we've had to travel through. But, you know, try to find the adjustments. We went up, what, 2.4, I think it was, this last year, so, you know, go to a negative and stop down unless your governor's pushed to make everybody else, you know, equal to what she thinks everybody should be. And please don't become Democrat, Mark. Just, that's my pun. Anyway, thank you very much.
Comedian's out of work, and then there's Bob. I couldn't resist.
I was.
You and I vying back and forth, it's all in good fun. Okay, anyone else? Like I said, there is another public comment at the end of the meeting.
Virtual.
Thank you all for coming.
Virtual.
Yes, please check.
Does anybody on the virtual have any public comments?
Terry says no.
Bob, you're ahead.
All right, thank you. All right, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would like to, just per discussion item, move 21 to 024 regarding the farmer's market down underneath the facilities. Chair, Mr. Ingles.
Yes. Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to move 21, 026, under my budget for discussion. Just more for information, because I didn't know what it was about, so I asked some questions that I thought I would share before maybe everybody else knows.
Okay, that was 026?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other changes to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
It's really not a change, just a comment. I appreciate the judge and their appointment and complying with statute to bring that to us at the point. But it would be nice if the new judge magistrate could come before the commissioners and at least introduce themselves.
We can make that happen.
Awesome.
We can make that happen. Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved and supported. Is there anything further? All those in favor of the consent agenda as amended signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, moving along. Correspondence is listed. Any comments on correspondence?
Yes, Commissioner, why don't we pull the resolutions that we see from a variety of counties and make them a discussion item under the Human Services Report?
Well, we can discuss them right now under correspondence stuff.
Okay. Okay, so the discussion is this, and I think that what I would like to see is the Human Services Committee, which with the Chair of Brett and Commissioner Benzine, to work them over and see what we can do to apply a proper resolution for our county. And so that would be my input under discussion. And if it requires a motion, I will create a motion.
Just, which of the, because there are several different topics under different things.
I understand. So what I think needs to happen as a matter of fact is the, when the committee of the Human Services gets together, that our community is unique, and I'm not sure that a one fits all application is appropriate. So I would ask that the committee goes through these and see what they think in terms of, you know, fits best for our county and our community.
I guess, Doug, for clarification, the correspondence and the ones you're referring to are listed 1 through 12.
So.
Just tell us which numbers you're looking at.
Okay, number four.
Okay.
Number five. In particular, number 10.
Number 10, okay.
And that would be my interest.
Those three, okay? That helps for clarity.
Okay.
Okay, Human Services.
I would support that motion.
Well, I'm not sure it requires a motion, but it is, it would be the chair's prerogative to appoint that Human Services Committee to look at that.
Okay.
So we'll handle it in that fashion, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine, sir.
Okay, so, and we'll expect a report back on those or on that item at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on correspondence?
Call for order. Was there a motion made?
No.
An motion submitted?
No, there was not a motion made. It was a request by Commissioner Ingles. He said he would make a motion if it needed to be done, but he did not make a motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. That brings us to the regular agenda, of which I mentioned to all of you, we were going to slide Doug's hand for him ahead of Terry. We also moved 21, 024 down under Mr. Ingles, and 21, 026 under other Commissioner Schmidt. And also Stephanie is going to ask for a employee replacement under Kathy's report. So those are just some things I penciled in under the regular agenda. Is there any other?
Do we need also?
First of all, we need, really, we need a motion.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Yep, and then with those additions.
I'll support that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we also need to actually take action on the request from the Equalization Director as well to replace that assessor or to post that assessor position that he has open as well?
That was, I thought we emailed that out, but maybe that didn't get emailed.
I mean, we should, we need to.
We should formally do that.
We need to do that at a meeting, not in an email.
We can do that under.
Move that underneath Kathy.
Under Kathy.
Well, that's fine, too.
Or, like I said, either one.
Either one.
Yeah.
First of all, the item you're referring to was in the budget.
Yeah, and so was, right.
Time sensitive, we felt, which Brett and I are still working on that personnel policy that we discussed at the last meeting, which we'll definitely have ready at the next meeting. So.
Yeah, I'm just, right, just to comply with that past resolution law, make that a legal board action.
Okay, so.
I said either, either personnel or, I mean, even, even Stephanie, it's like, could go underneath personnel as opposed to, other than it does fall underneath.
Well, that's why I think equalization falls underneath me, too.
Yeah.
The only reason why I said that. I really don't care which way it is.
Yeah.
Fine.
We'll put it under Kathy. It's just a motion to finalize that approval, so.
What's those?
You have a motion and support.
Correct, on this side of the room. And then we've got.
Move to amend with the additions of the personnel vacancies added underneath the budget chair.
A second to the amendment?
I'm frank with that.
And to include in that is the three items I mentioned as far as the two resolutions we moved down.
You're right, yes.
As well as Doug speaking.
Yeah.
Okay. So the amendment has multi items. Is there anything else? So first, we'll vote on the package of amendments. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll vote on the regular agenda as amended, unless there's further discussion. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Doug, that brings us up to you, please.
Very good, sir. Thank you, and good morning, all of you. Find if I put these glasses on, I can't see because the fog built up, so pardon me for leaving them off for a moment. I do have something I would like to, well, thank you, sir, share with each of you. Stayed in taking notes, almost took to make all the notes and ask all the questions you wish.
Thank you.
As you may or may not know, because of the pandemic, emergency management turned into a personal protective equipment warehouse. Our emergency operations center was full of gloves, gowns, face shields, hand sanitizer, et cetera. We don't really have a good place to store those things, which all of a sudden became necessary here about a year ago. So to that end, when the board last year asked for special project requests, I requested the ability to build a storage building, a small pole barn, 30 by, 30 by 40, on the property out there at 911. The 911 Board, the Regional Telephone Services Board, gave their stamp of approval, technically it's county property, but purchased with 911 funds, so I wanted to get their buy-in. We drew up some plans, and IT Director Dave Holcomb was very helpful getting it on the bid net site that the county participates in. We had a lot of interest, but it's a fairly small project. So there are only three companies in the end that submitted bids. Those are listed on the page, but I will give them publicly here. North American Construction Enterprises out of St. Clair Shores, Pool Construction, which is Dan Poole out of Osseo, Michigan, and Full Construction Company of right here in Hillsdale. They were the three that bid by the cutoff. We had a bid opening session virtually last Friday afternoon at 3:00, and the bids were written the order that they came in. But Pool Construction was the winning bidder with $35,945. Full Construction Company bid $51,780, and North American Construction bid $85,734. So we are here to present those to you. Mr. Poole is a local construction guy. He actually built a lot of the wood structure that's in our current 911 building. He was subcontracted to do that by the general contractor. So he's familiar with the property, familiar with, we're familiar with his work. He does a good job, and that would be our recommendation. But under the policies as established by the company, and they, you know, are good policies, even though the money was put out there in the form of an allocation to the budget, it needs to be reviewed and approved by this group. That's why I'm here.
Mr. Commissioner, I'd move to accept the recommendation of the Hillsdale County Emergency Management as recommended. Pool Construction at a bid price of $35,945.
Second.
Moved and supported. Discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Doug, what was the amount that was budgeted in the capital improvements?
$35,000.
Okay, so it's on budget, it's not over. With that said.
It's that much over.
I mean, you get that, you get this gauche. So just a couple, one first comment, Pool Construction did build the new pole building that replaced the horse barn at the fairgrounds, so if you saw that building go up, and actually I had to fight a fire with Dan, so he's an all-around good guy, long, long time member of the community. His parents, they passed the church, kind of liked the corners, and just like I say, all-around good guy. My only other question, I know that this, it's just one of those semantics things, and I just like to clarify, the 911 Board operates somewhat independently from county government, because they have their own funding source, and they have the property there. I just want to clarify going forward, ownership, because is this a county building that then falls under facilities of the county, because emergency management is a county function, not a Emergency Services Telephone Board function? So even though the land that it sits on is probably technically owned by 911, I just, I just want to, if it falls within the sphere of, so now is our facilities department going to be expected to perform the maintenance on the building? And I would just rather have this discussion so that we are clear and the minutes clearly indicate.
Thank you.
Who is actually responsible for that building?
Because going back, when we built the building and decided with the previous board's blessing to put emergency management out there, that presents an issue that we face all the time, because we cannot use 911 funds for anything, any other purpose under state law, except for 911. So to solve that little problem, we worked out with Mark at the time and Randy, the county does not pay rent for the office space, the heat, the lights, the whatever, that emergency management uses in that building. What they don't pay in dollars, what they do pay is in-kind services. They mow the lawn, they plow the snow, things of that nature. So thank you for bringing that up, because this building is a county, well, property is county property, the whole thing is. It was purchased with 911 funds, which is an acceptable use. But this building is a county building, not a 911 building. It's to store PTE and a couple of vehicles that we have, have some sandbags and a generator and all that stuff, which is currently, by the way, stored in a building in the Sheriff's Department. This will expand on that storage area, but it'll also, when we move out, give that over to the Sheriff's Department for their use as well, and their work of that. But it is a county building, if it should leak, break, whatever, excuse me, we'll be looking to the county facilities folks to take care of that. I will point out, the building has no electric. We're doing some light insulation to store PTE and that sort of thing. I'd really like to have a climate control, but the budget isn't going to allow for that. We're not even putting in electricity. We're putting a piece of conduit through the concrete for future wiring if we find the funds, but we're being very conservative on all of that.
So the bid cost included estivation, concrete?
Yes.
Yes. How tall?
I don't recall. It's 10-foot doors, 10-foot overhead doors.
Probably 12-foot, you'd say.
I think so, in that neighborhood.
Okay, further questions?
We will at some point, of course, want to put electricity. We would like to put a driveway to it, but we'll get it on the property and talk about the other options down the road.
Okay. Very good. All those in favor of the motion of approving it signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion, Terry. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you for your support, and thank you for, we just did this Friday, and I wanted to get notice to the contractor so they could, even though it looks like snow outside, hopefully they'll be building soon, so.
Why, did they give you any indication as to proposed timeline? I know.
They have been specifications, we said, built within six months.
Okay.
So that puts us mid-August or something like that. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug. Yeah, I, in my conversation with Doug, I'd sooner get it ahead of us sooner than later, because contractors like to start filling their schedule, so, but, all right, thank you. All right, Terry, you're up.
Hey, we're, I'm ready, we're, we had a little delay there. Wendy was having a hard time signing on, so I think I have her on my phone. I'm on my iPad. You have to love virtual. So, can you hear, okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Well, thank you all for giving me this opportunity, and welcome to Brett, Brett, Kathy, and Doug, the Kids on the Block. Always pleased to present to the county commissioners, you should have received an email from Wendy with our audit and then a one-page service data report. It has services breakout. Did you all receive that?
Yes.
All right, so we can start with the services breakout, and then I'll turn it over to Wendy. Can't see her, but you'll be over here. On the services breakout, just a couple of updates we noted when I was going through this. There, I will send you the updated, but under other, under pet assistance, if you see the pet assistance line item, it is 19, there was not a number, a number of clients served for 2020. That number is 19 on clients in pet assistance. And then if you go over to units, it's the same number, 19. And then if you go up to fitness center, you'll also see a blank in the number of clients served for the fitness center under fiscal year 20. That number is 365. And we can send you that updated one. Another, another thing we do for county commissioners is we generate through our CareVantage report, the, we break it down, so you have all of your areas within a specific report in our client tracking system. Depending on the area that you serve, we pull by, for example, Mark, I'm thinking of you, Alan, over there, Reading Way, those numbers, so you'll know what constituents you have. I know Commissioner Benzine is familiar with it from presenting to Woodbridge. If I'm correct, right, Brett?
Yes, yes, Terry, thank you.
Yeah, so that is, that will give you more detail. This is our total number of seniors served in the county. I don't need to tell any of you that, obviously with the pandemic, we're seeing, we saw a dramatic decrease, going from pretty much one out of every four seniors in 2019 to one out of every five in 2020. And much of that number is due to the closures that we, as many other businesses and organizations, had to suspend services. Specifically, last March, it was our congregate lunch site, we, for about six weeks, suspended our home-based services. One, to make sure that we had the proper PTEs and testing available, but the other thing that I got through the blessing in it, a lot of family members were working from home, so they were able to provide that in-home care. We did resume that in-home care to those most in need in May. Our fitness center, of course, remained closed for close to six and a half months. That was the headache, but we opened the fitness center back up with new protocol in place in October. And then our congregate lunch site remains closed, our building remains closed to the general public. Of course, we've got our fitness center open, we have been able to help people with equipment loan, we've done our curbside. We have a crisis management team made up of our Director of Operations, our Director of Nursing, and our Director of Human Resources and myself. And of course, we've been meeting, we made a plan, and over the last year, changed that plan numerous times. However, we were, we just met this week and were hoping to open our congregate lunch site with the restaurants reopening, and then received a directive that because we deal with the older population, we cannot open our congregate site. We were pretty excited. We thought, oh, great, you know, maybe, maybe by the year anniversary of when we closed it. So we're waiting to hear more on that. I'd like to say that in March, we should be able to, with proper spacing, Wendy's shaking her head, open that up. You will see in our home-delivered meals, while most of our programs showed a decrease, we showed, sorry, you could have heard what we're having for lunch today. We, in our home-delivered meals line item, you will see that we did show a 28.6% in the number of meals and a 39% increase in the number of clients. During the pandemic, the regulations and requirements for Meals on Wheels were relaxed, and so we were able to take on more of those isolated seniors under CARES Act funding and, and provide, last count was, we added an additional 190 new clients during the pandemic in our Meals on Wheels program. And I like to remind county commissioners that it's as much about the nutrition as it is about the eyes on. Our eyes on was a little bit different in that we had no contact, but we had containers, and we would make sure that when the meals were delivered, that the client would come to the window or open the door, so that we could make sure they were still okay. Social isolation, it has been big. I don't need to tell any of you, because I'm probably preaching to the choir, but the isolation piece, the physical isolation, was a real challenge with regards to the mental health. One of the things I think it's important to know is that the senior center throughout this pandemic has really made a very strong attempt to, while we may not have been eyes on, it's not that we weren't meeting the needs of the seniors. And the example, early on, is that while DHHS said that they could not do eyes on, and Region 2 Area Agency on aging are still, most of them working from home, they would, they would basically do assessments over the phone, and then contracted us to provide services, whether it was home health or Meals on Wheels. And we have an assessment piece. We were very uncomfortable with that early on, and so our Director of Nursing said she would. And so our director of nursing said she would be willing to go out and do that eyes on. By June, we had more APS referrals than we had in the entire year of 2019. If you don't have the eyes on, you can't assess for bedbugs, safety issues in the home, bed sores, things like that. So it was about July, I'm pleased to say that we took this to the state and got an opinion from the Attorney General's office that yes, if a, if a senior is an imminent risk or for his own, from his own safety issue or from family members, that they in fact could go out and do a, they, they could do an in-person visit, the Adult Protective Services. It was, it was disturbing early on as we navigated this new way of doing things, though, those individuals that were falling through the cracks. So fortunately, there was, there was a solution. And the Attorney General's office, when we went to our virtual senior summit on elder abuse, were able to then say, no, 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 they can go out and do that eyes on. So I did want to bring that to your attention as well. We have continued to provide, you know, many of the information and assistance throughout this. We've had somebody, a real voice on the phone from 8:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday. And that has been a welcome relief to many. We also incorporated the number you'll see in the outreach. It wasn't outreach, I'm trying to remember what category. We did a lot of wellness phone calls to all of our Meals on Wheels clients, our home-based service clients, our Adult Day program, which is not up and running yet. We're hoping to have our Adult Day program up and running. I'm being the optimist in April, and that overnight respite. So we were able to transition our onsite respite, our Adult Day program, to in-home respite so that we could contact them. But the wellness texts were wonderful for people and we really appreciate those continuous phone calls. Also wanted to let the commissioners know that we have been very helpful with the vaccinations, getting the vaccines out to seniors, the Health Department, Hillstone Hospital. When they have a clinic in, for example, last Friday, there was obviously weather. They went and did the vaccines, so we had, we were making phone calls yesterday because they were taking some of those vaccines. They said, who's the seniors you can call to get there today for the vaccines? Last count, I think it was 30 plus that we've been able to help. Whether it's just connecting for them because they don't have internet or that capability to sign up for their appointments or transportation to get those vaccines. So our mission has always been to keep people at home independent, healthy, and we do that with the support of the community. I'm, I'm pleased that we live in a community where it seems like when we can collaborate, we do. We were just a recent recipient to special funding, emergency assistance funding for utilities. And that we have for, through the end of September. But we work pretty hand-in-hand through the Human Services Network and have been trying to stay ahead of, okay, you have this additional funding that might help fill this gap. Or they will send seniors here, whether it's DHHS or Community Action Agency or the, well, just a number of, of the hospital, which I've already mentioned, and the Health Department. We are hoping that we can be more normal in 2021. We miss our Good Friday breakfast, we miss our senior picnic, we miss the camaraderie. But we're looking forward to a new normal. And with that, I'm going, unless there are questions, especially with the new county commissioners. I know Brett's coming over on Thursday morning to get the onsite tour and I would welcome any of the others who may not be familiar to set up a time to really sit down and talk with you about exactly what we do or go over any of our numbers, the reports that you receive. If you have questions, and I know Wendy will say this, she'll hear from her, you may not see her, but you'll hear from her, with regards to the audit and how we separate out our senior mileage funding, our, our grants, state, federal grant funding, our program income, our private donations. One of the changes that we did do in this past year was our federal and state grants require a 15% match. And we have always been able to meet that 15% match, in fact, well above that 15% match because of the senior mileage funding. And we changed it. I don't know if Region Two was really pleased with that change. However, they have always reimbursed us 1/12 of whatever the grant is, even though every month we exceeded those numbers, for example, in Meals on Wheels. So what we opted to do is, which really makes sense, at least to, to Wendy, to the, to the staff here and also to our board of directors, is that we are now, once we reach that 15% match, we are changing the client, the funding source, to senior mileage. Because truly, it's the senior mileage that allows us to extend past when a waiting list would go into play. We are very blessed in the fact that that funding allows us to continue providing services to those, even though grant funding has been depleted. So it will probably make, Triple A's number has not looked so great as far as the number of clients served, but it, it's more accurate and from a transparency point of view to our constituents in Hillstone County, really showing those senior mileage dollars doing what they should be doing. So, any questions before I turn the, turn the mic over to Wendy?
And Terry Merkweiler.
Yes?
Just wanted to point out, I know something that's been, you know, talked about with commissioners in the past and just for this, for the benefit of everyone here, the, I know you've got it titled as unduplicated clients, but that, that number has come up, you know, in discussion in the past of how many actually unduplicated and that number, I think, has been, I, I'm sure you remember John Berkt, he was always very interested in that number, so.
Yes. So if you were to add up all of the numbers in any column on the number of clients served, it would, for example, in fiscal year 18, it would definitely come up to more than 2463. We give an unduplicated number because oftentimes, a person receiving meals on wheels may also receive transportation, may also receive equipment, emergency equipment. So there is overlap from a transparency point, but we want to make sure that people are aware, this is an unduplicated number, that bottom number is unduplicated. One of the things that we do, that Wendy helps create, is our service data report and really that's much more, kind of goes into the meat of each program. And here's the cost, the direct unit cost per meal or per hour of service or per piece of equipment, with direct service cost and then total cost, which has the overhead, you know, the insurance and the liability and all those other little things that, that make up our annual budget. But yes, that number of clients served is unduplicated at the bottom, which is good to know.
Thank you, Terry.
Any comments before I turn it over to Wendy?
Any other questions for Terry? Did a good job, you have no questions at this time, Terry, so.
Okay, thank you.
Wendy's up.
And, and our coffee machine broke, so I was, I was gonna pour, I was going to pour some of my coffee. I brought it home for Wendy, but she'll try to do her best without. So, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Good morning, Wendy.
Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's the first thing that's gone right this morning. So I just, I sent you a copy of the audit and I thought I would just go over the audit briefly for you. This covers our last fiscal year, which ran from October 1, 2019 through September 30th, 2020. So I would like to draw your attention to the first page. We can just kind, I'm not going to go through it piece by piece, although I find it fascinating reading. I'm sure that many of you might not. So, looking at the independent auditor, auditors' report, so this is where you're going to tell us what, how we did in our audit. It's broken down into different portions. The first portion is the management's responsibility for the financial statements. That's our responsibility. Our responsibility is to ensure our internal controls protect our assets from conversion. So basically from being converted from the seminar's assets to my assets, well, that's not, that's conversion. And ensure that we adhere to all of our policies and procedures and they also protect the integrity of our accounting data, mainly reporting and making sure that we are following GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. The auditor's responsibility is to basically dig through the, the data and ensure that, and give an opinion as to whether our financial statements fairly present the economic position of our organization. And then the last paragraph on that page is the opinion. And as they say, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the senior center. So we had a very good audit, no problems, and our financials are, fairly present our economic position. So moving to page three, is the statement of financial position or the balance sheet, as we might call it. And I'm not going to go through piece by piece, but we'll just kind of hit some of the highlights. The first thing I want to talk about is cash. So our total cash at the end of, that's September 30th, we had $948,065 in total cash, which was an increase of $308,744 from last year or a 48.29% increase. So if we look at that cash, on that $948,000, we had to have $105,858 put away for restricted, donor restricted items and board designated items. We picked, we, we participated in the Paycheck Protection Program. And right now, because we have not applied for forgiveness, that's sitting as a liability. And so that's going to, if we have to pay that, that would require $260,747 of our cash. And then our bond payments for the, for 2021 coming up, $305,379, which out of that $948,065, that leaves us $276,081 available for our day-to-day operations. Last year, we had $263,507 available for operations. So we're, we're pretty close to where we were last year. Moving on to the property type of equipment, we had a few changes in there. You can see our land improvements increased. And we finally, we were like, great, we had a little party because we finally, after I don't know how many years, got our drainage problems fixed. So we were happy, it cost a little bit of money, but we got it fixed and now we're very happy about it. Also, you can see that some of the equipment decreased a little bit, but most of that was just due to cleanup on the depreciation schedule. Computers that we got rid of a long time ago that I had to get off of the schedule, et cetera. So nothing, nothing major there. Other assets, the big one in there are, it says lease origination fees. So what those are, are, are the cost of issuing the bonds. Though that cost is amortized over the life of the bond. So you'll see that for another five years, I think we have left to pay off the last bond. Current liabilities, the big one there is the Paycheck Protection Program. Like I said, we, we have not yet applied for forgiveness. However, based on what I've, what I've done the research, I believe the only thing we are going to have to pay back is the $10,000 grant that we received. So, but until I actually do, we have to count it as a liability. So that's there. Sorry, I lost my place a little bit. That's really all I have to say about that. Net assets, those are equity, net equity. And out of that, donors, restricted donors and designated by board, $105,858. What is secured by our PPE property type equipment, $1,883,997, which leaves unrestricted net assets of $656,480. So looking at our balance sheet, a couple of ratios that I like to check, I usually record at the board meeting. The first one is our current ratio. And the current ratio describes our liquidity, how well we're able to meet our everyday obligations. So our current ratio right now is sitting at 1.58 to 1, which means that for every $1 in liabilities, we have $1.58 in current assets to cover. So more than enough to cover our day-to-day operations. The second ratio I like to look at is our debt to equity. And right now, our debt to equity is 0.68 to 1, which means for every dollar in equity, we have 68 cents in debt, which is good. For a while, a couple of years ago, when we first took the bonds out, we were upside down. We had more debt than we had equity. So as we're paying those bonds off, we're getting where we want to be. So that's the, basically the balance sheet. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I don't hear any, Terry, keep her, I mean Wendy, keep going.
Okay, let's go to page four, the statement of activities, which is basically our income statement. I'm just going to go real quick to here. Our total revenues this year were $2,185,490. And as you can see, it's broken out, the top, public support, the federal, state, local, those are grants. The federal grants that we received, the Region Two, and then the local grants are, those are mostly the community foundation. Contribution, obviously, self-explanatory. And then we have the second part, revenues. So the property taxes, those are our mileage dollars. Program income is what we, we call program income, donations that we received for providing services. So if we provide meals, they have the opportunity to donate for the meal instead of being billed if they qualify. And we call that program income. Program fees for service, those are the clients that we provide service for fee, obviously. And then just some other little things, interest income, other fees and other income, just little items there. So our total revenue again was $2,185,490 compared to last year, $2,441,328, which is a decrease of $255,838 or a 10.48% decrease. Obviously, it stems from the fact that we were closed for a while and that we still have programs that we aren't running. But the good news was our expenses this year were $2,57349. Last year, they were $2,183,964. So that was a decrease of $126,615 or 5.8% decrease. So our revenues decreased, our expenses decreased, not by as much as I'd like, but we had a lot of expenditures. We had, we had put money into IT to help people work from home and to make sure that our data set was protected. We had to put money into buying protective, personal protective equipment. PPE reminds me of property plant, equipment, but in this case, it's the personal protection equipment. We had to put a lot of money into making sure that our aides have the, the equipment that they needed to stay safe. We put money into making sure that we were able to screen people if they come in the building. So money well spent, just, you know, I'm, I'm the money person, I wish it would have been more. Oh, yes, oh, okay, yeah. And we also, this year, we did receive a grant from State for PPE, personal protection equipment. We, we could have spent up to $40,000, but we, we spent, we spent We, we could have spent up to $40,000, but we, we spent, we spent close to $10,000 that we were reimbursed for, so that was great. So then down to our net, net income, this year, our net income was $128,141. Last year, our net income was $257,364, which is a decrease of $129,233, or a 50.21% decrease. Again, I was just happy we came out in the, in the black and we, we were able to, you know, continue all of our programs, and I think we're doing well. So that's what I have to the income statement. Do I have any questions there?
Just now, keep going. Thank you.
Okay, so very quickly, last thing, I just would like to direct your attention to page five. You'll see this is the statement of functional expenses. And what this statement does is it divides up our expenses into different categories. So the community connections programs, our home-based services programs, our life enrichment programs, program expenses, and then our management in general, our overhead there. So what I want to point out is last year, the split between overhead and, or admin and program was 89 cents and 11 cents. So what that means is last year, for every $1 that came in, 11 cents went to overhead and 89 cents went to programs. This year, when I say this year, you know, I'm always a little behind. I'm talking about our last fiscal year. The split was 79.21, which means 79 cents of every dollar coming in went to programs, 21 cents of every dollar went to overhead, which is all, which is a significant change for us. In comparison, the Better Business Bureau says that if you find a charity that's lower than 6535, you shouldn't, you know, you shouldn't deal with them. So we're well above that standard. We're below where we want to be. And there's a good reason for that because when we closed down, I'd say we went into survival mode. We went into, we wanted to make sure that our organization was going to weather this crisis. And so when we closed the programs, all of our resources went into the energy in the company. So, I mean, it makes sense. It's, it's not as pretty as we'd like it, but it's still not too bad. So, and then that's something to tell you about, but I will say to want some good bedtime reading, you can go through the notes of the financial statements. Those will tell you about our different accounting policies and explain how we got to some numbers on the statements. So that's what I have. Can I answer any questions?
I wanted to just interject on our employment because historically, we don't have unemployment. As a nonprofit, we have the option to pay opt-out. So historically, we haven't had a lot of unemployment costs. Obviously, this year, we're shutting down, we had a lot of claims. So in the nonprofit status, you pay as you go for any unemployment claim. That hit us hard this year because at one time, we had 28 people of our roughly 50 employees on board. So that did hit us hard. We're hoping that much of that may be forgiven, but we're not sure. But we did incur that, that expense that historically we don't incur. So I think it was worth noting, at least noting, the unemployment piece to our budget in 2020 as well. And that could have included some, for example, when we split our kitchen, we had two different crews. So one crew would work one week on making the meals, the next week they would be off, then they would come back following week. Our, our thought process was if we've got an outbreak of COVID in our kitchen, we can isolate or quarantine crew one and have crew two come in. And we have been very, very fortunate with regards to number of COVID cases within our organization or within the clients we serve. Of course, we have not had zero. However, I think our Director of Nursing, Maggie Monroe, has done an excellent job in really trying to stay ahead. She is part of, she's usually the one sitting on with the EOC group, which is, you know, Doug Stanford and the Health Department and the local city managers and such, to kind of keep abreast of what's going on so we can be best informed for our seniors. The other item that I just wanted to add is we have been very blessed. Consumers Energy did give us a challenge grant in 2020 for matching for a new wheels-on-wheels vehicle. Our wheels-on-wheels do a lot of road travel. And so that should be, we were able to meet that challenge, $15,000 challenge grant. A new wheels-on-wheels vehicle does cost $45,000, not cheap. And then the other piece is that the local foundation, Hillsdale County Community Foundation, just approved a grant that allowed us to replace our three-door freezer, a new ice machine, and then a poofer, or poofer, which is a, a piece of equipment that keeps our food warm. Or it can poof, apparently, things like rolls. A poofer, a poofer. So we, yeah, that was very nice. The total on that was $8,500. So if there are no questions, I believe that that is our report.
Any questions for Terry or Wendy? I'll just interject here as our representative on the Senior Center Board. Our meetings are the, what, the fourth Thursday of every month, Terry?
Yeah.
Fourth Tuesday. Fourth Tuesday. So, so in two weeks, when we meet again, in the morning, that afternoon, I've got a Senior Center Board meeting. So if any of you have questions at any time, feel free to get those to me, and I will try and get them answered from the experts at the Senior Center.
And we've always said too, Commissioner Wiley, that Wendy is more than available. If there are questions that come up from your constituents as county commissioners and that you want more information on, she's available, I'm available. Sometimes the misinformation that gets out there, the best way to do that is just go to the source before it like spreads like a tsunami. Some of the information is accurate and then some is not. So it's, it's important to get it straight from the horse's mouth sometimes, so.
There you go. All right. Well, thank you very much, Terry and Wendy. So have a good day, or you can stay on if you like.
You too. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right on to committee reports. Mr. Engels.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiley. Several items today. First, from the EDP, which is the Economic Development Partnership, we have available a rural business development grant. The grant is available through the USDA. It has a range of availability, the grant money from $10,000 up to $500,000, and it is available to towns, communities, agencies, nonprofits, institutions of higher learning, and so on. The grant application is available, and I bring this information to you for those that may be interested in the grant. Next, I have from Michigan Works, there will be a job fair. And that job fair is for healthcare workers on Tuesday, February 23rd. It's a job fair. It will have representatives of employers and job seekers can participate by registering at Michigan Works Southeast. Next, we have a short discussion on the Planning Commission. We had a meeting this past week, and they are currently working on the ordinance of the Planning Commission, which currently will sunset July 1st. There are two meetings of the Planning Commission between now and then, one in March and then the other in May. So the ordinance does need to be reworked and ready to go. There will be a public hearing required as well, so we need to get that information in time and fashion so that the Planning Commission can have the new ordinance ready to go. Quick question of asking for consensus of the, this ord, that the Planning Commission should be diligent and should continue to work at ordinance, and that would be a question that I am asking.
The discussion before the end of the year with the previous board, and the reason we put the money back in the budget for it was that we felt prudent to continue on as far as the process of extending that or renewing that.
Right, and that's what we need to know, just to make sure, that this current board wants to proceed as well. My opinion as a commissioner is that the Planning Commission is a valuable tool. It's great information for those that are outside of our community to look at the master plan, to see what our county is all about. And it also is a valuable tool for future grants that may pop up. A master plan is often needed to be awarded grants. And so I would encourage this board to give me a strong consensus so that the Planning Commission feels confident and is ready to spend time to rework the ordinance to make it current.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Engels, I will lend my support and my voice to the support for the Planning Commission. I did have the opportunity to serve on it as a representative of township government and to chair the Planning Commission as well. I will tell you from my previous experience as a county commissioner, as well as my experience with the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission is somewhat orphaned at many times by the, by the commission. And so moving forward, the only thing that I would ask, if we are, if we are going to come together with consensus that, yes, we should have, and I do believe, yes, they do valuable work, very honestly, they save this board a lot of work in those PA 116 reviews because there's, there's a bunch of work that goes into those and making sure everything is there. And there's other, other things that they do, that they review, that, that would fall back on us if we did not have a Planning Commission, that, that still have to be done. So, but all I would ask is, is that we, we actually support them. And when I say support them, number one, one of the things that was orphaned is, is that when this board had a secretary to the Board of Commissioners, they served as the clerical secretary for the Planning Commission. And then after that position went away, Nick Wheeler kind of took it over, and he said, "This is a lot of work, and I really can't do my job and do this effectively." So eventually, a previous board allocated some money to the Planning Commission for Kim Jackson's position, and whether it's Kim or somebody else. But they have financially supported, starting last year, for that person, that clerical person who is actually here as the face forward to the world of the Planning Commission in this building once a week. And, and all that I would ask from all of you is if we are going to continue on and renew the planning ordinance and have them continue their work is, is number one, that you make a commitment in the next budget cycle to continue to support them. And then one of the other things that I would urge, and, and I urged this previously as a commissioner, is, is that we really should honor those people that serve on that commission, that take time in the middle of their day, if it's, if they're not a professional. I mean, we do have some, like the ISD School, he's getting paid. When we had Alan Beaker from the city of Hillsdale, he's a full-time, that's his full-time job. But the committee members that we have, that it would be really nice, we could put a couple bucks in there and pay them the same per diem that our commissioner representative gets paid. I really think that that's fair, that we appropriate in the next budget cycle that money that would, and they don't have to take it if they want to say, "Hey, I'm here and I'm doing this because I want to." But I think that for them to, to give them 30 bucks, for them to take a couple hours out of their day and drive to this building for their meeting, that, you know, that, that would show that we actually believe that that Planning Commission has value in its function. Thank you.
Just missed it. Damn it.
Thank you, Commissioner Benzine. We will, in our next meeting, we will move forward, you know, it seems that, that is the direction, and we will work at ordinance. Next, resolution for the farmer's market. We recommend that the farmer's market exclusively be allowed to operate in the Courthouse parking lot on Saturday mornings beginning May 8, 2021, through October 30, 2021, beginning between the hours of 6:00 AM and 2:00 PM, providing approval has been given by the facilities director and that all required documents have been properly submitted. I recommend and move approval for this resolution.
Support.
Moved in support of the discussion.
Yeah, I have one concern. And the application that the individuals sign and submit to participate in the farmer's market says that they're going to indemnify and hold harmless the county for any liability claims.
That is correct.
Okay? Where's their proof? And are they collectible? And that is my concern. And by that, I mean, where is their evidence of insurance that they're going to defend the county against any liability claim? We asked all of our emergency ambulance companies that we pay money out of, that are not even on county property, to provide us proof of liability insurance. Where is the Hillsdale Farmers Market Association's proof of liability insurance? Or where are the individual vendors' proof of liability insurance? That, to back up that claim that they're going to defend and hold harmless the county?
Mr. Chair. Thank you. You know, as our farmer is a founding member of the county farmer's market, I can tell you, first of all, there, there is no formal organization. In other words, they are not.
I think it's Ken or Jackson.
Thank you. And of course, Brian Benzine was pitch up for it, and I thought definitely.
Tell me why you're not speaking.
Say something.
Kim, we can hear you.
Somebody needs to hear.
Whoever's talking, Kim, we can hear you. Please mute yourself.
All right, sorry, I thought I was.
Thank you. All right. Please continue.
So thank you. You know, as a founding member of the, the farmer's market, and I think it's been, this will be their 14th year on the courthouse, I can tell you, there is no legal entity. The farmer's market, they charge their vendors no dues, they have no income, and so there is no structure. I can also tell you that the farmer's market will not exist if there is ever a cost then because, very honestly, that many of these vendors, the amount of income that produces, it, it does not facilitate the ability to purchase liability insurance, to, to pay dues. And that, that's one of the unique things about it. The beauty is, is, is that we, we open up our grounds to a lot of different people. And, and, and I understand completely your question, but we, we open up our grounds to a lot of different people. We, we allow people to have weddings in our gazebo. We have organizations that have functions on our lawn. And long ago, we developed this standard waiver that we have. And so we have, we have used that, and, and I, and I understand, we always have to look at possibilities. So, but to best my knowledge, in all of the organizations, in the time that, and I think it was Randy that actually developed that waiver, with help of legal counsel, that we never had a claim against the county for, for any of those groups that utilize. I will also tell you that, that the market takes it very, very seriously, the privilege of being able to use the courthouse grounds, and they work very diligently with themselves. One of the things that they addressed is, is, is that the vendors can't bring animals, in other words, their pet dog or their, because we had somebody who brought a bird, maybe like a parrot or something. And because... a parrot or something, and because of concerns that you don't know where the Polish people go to buy. Now, the public walks through with their past, but the market vendors, they said, within their own rules, you can't bring your dog or your parrot. They have very diligently worked to make sure that, you know, trip hazards and other things do not exist. And I mean, they work hard at that, and they put a lot of pressure on their fellow vendors so that things don't happen. So I, and I fully appreciate, you know, what you're trying to do. You're trying to protect us. That, when I say us, the county. But at the same time, that we have tons of people that use our grounds and on a very regular basis, and that we really never asked them to provide us, you know, on their insurance policy as indemnified against liability. I mean, I understand as a business owner, I mean, I have vendors that we personally, we have to do that, that we have to name them on. But I really don't think that that's been practiced in the past, and I don't really see it as a big problem. But again, you know, I'm, my farm is vendor, so.
Just to echo as some, you know, they have been there, I believe you're correct, 14 years, and there's never been an issue. And the other thing is, is that we need to be cognizant of that entire grounds that surrounds the courthouse is actually part of the Parks Committee.
Yes.
So it'll be in the new parks plan. But since the courthouse sits there and Facilities basically has control of that, the authority to use that grounds is through our Facilities Department. But your point's well taken, but I agree with Brad though.
To me, to me, that application and that waiver is not worth the paper that it's written on.
Not according to legal, because as Brad indicated, legal helped put it together.
Because if you don't have proof that they're collectible. And that's, that is my point.
Somebody will bring you a document, though, and it could be a false document. I mean, in reality, you can ask for the moon and, you know, I mean, there's got to be a certain amount of good faith as well. And I think 14 years is the good faith, quite frankly. But point well taken. Any other discussion?
I did just kind of point a clarification. When you said Randy worked with the farmer's market for the legal clarification.
Go ahead.
My point is, is it's Randy Finley with the Facilities Department.
Yes, yes, and actually, it's not just the market, it's collectively all of the people that use our grounds. So is it the Legion that does the crosses?
No, it was like training the club to do the crosses.
Okay, see, I mean, we have, we have a lot of people who regularly use our grounds. So for the Ministerial Association that, you know, places a crash on our grounds, we have, you know, the hot dog vendor that used to set up Butler Dogs, when they, they actually used to set up on our grounds once a week during nice weather. The Kiwanis Club has historically been here with their ice cream social that they do. So we have, we have a lot of, and we have wedding, like I say, our gazebo, which we bought many years ago when Maple Farms over in Allen went out of business, Randy was actually able to obtain that at a pretty good price at their auction over there. We have, like, we have a lot of people that utilize our ground, and they all signed that same liability waiver. So it wasn't just the farmer's market, it was, it was something that Randy worked on for anyone who wanted to formally ask to use it, use the ground. And a lot of those approvals are just done directly through Randy because they're one type events.
More questions? Comments? Comments well noted.
And like I said, my concern is, we ask for certificate of liability insurance from the ambulance association members who don't even come on county property.
Understand. All favor of the motion or the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Passes four of one, thank you. Please continue.
My final update for this Board of Commissioners today is the Facilities update, in particular on the historic courthouse. We had a meeting, Facilities Committee with Kathy and myself, had a meeting yesterday with Randy, Facilities Department head, as well, the Volcom IT Department head, and many questions were asked and answered. The best current update that I have for you is that the probate court office will be finished in two to three weeks and ready for staff to move into. The load-bearing wall then will be evaluated by the engineer soon after that so that a recommendation can be given to the Board of Commissioners. We also will receive from Ms. Finley, upgrade and basic remodeling options, we'll have two options to consider for moving forward with the remodeling, and that will be available and presented to you here in our next meeting, 2/23 of 2021. That's the update on the courthouse. The other update that I have is on the jail gate in the, at the Sheriff's Department. It had some problems initially in working, and the electrical problems were found and fixed, and the gate is ready to go and working currently. So any questions from commissioners, have any answer questions? If that does complete, I report.
Questions?
What did you say to probate court office?
Probate court office will be finished in two to three weeks.
Okay, thank you.
And ready for staff to move into.
Mr. Chair.
All right, I'm going to start with the Resolution 21-026. We recommend that the chair be authorized to sign Hillsdale County Remonumentation Contracts with the following surveyors. Bartolo Surveying LLC, 131 East Front Street, Adrian, Michigan. Anger Surveying and Engineering, PO Box 57, Mason, Michigan. Ludinski and Associates LLC, PO Box 129, Somerset, Michigan. And Ristera and.
Ripstra.
Ripstra and Sheppelman.
Yeah, Sheppelman.
2535 Spring Arbor Road, Jackson, Michigan. These contracts are effective January 1, 2021, through December 31 of 2021. Respectfully submitted, Catherine Schmidt, Chair, Budget Committee.
Support. Thank you.
Just, I will call around for information on this to find out kind of what the backstory was. We have budgeted $42,000 in the 2021 budget for this. This money actually is a grant through the state of Michigan, it's 100% funded. What the remonumentation is all about is remonumenting the corners in the county. My understanding is, is that the budget for 2021 is for 28 corners to be done. The reason why we have more than one LLC or company doing it is because to do 28 corners would be too much for one, is what I was told. And my understanding as to what needs to be accomplished for this job to be complete is another 1,518 corners. And there was, Brent brought to my attention that there's a county surveyor. I don't know if the county, I think the county surveyor is the Ludinski individual. From my standpoint, I don't know what the county surveyor does, I didn't get that question answered, but there is no money in our budget for a county surveyor. So it's not like he's getting, he has a department, and yet we're hiring this out. Although again, we're not, county's not actually paying for it, the state pays for it. This is done under review by the Registered Deeds Office.
Yeah, and I spent some time yesterday talking with Dean Summerlot, or pressure Dean Summerlot, about the surveyor, and the surveyor is covered in Chapter 54 of the Michigan compiled laws. And yeah, there's, we have an elected surveyor, there's no salary for that position, pretty much. They get involved if there's a dispute on a, on a survey, help to settle that dispute and so forth, but yeah, so.
Mr. Chair, and I just, if I might add, that position was actually Mr. Ludinski who brought that matter a long time ago, probably 20-plus years ago, that the county had none, the statute would have allowed for it. And so that is one of the county offices that is elected, and he is the only person to the best of my knowledge who's ever run for that position. But when he presented that idea to the Board of Commissioners to create that office within county government, his pledge was that he would never ask for a budget or a salary, that it was merely to satisfy that statutory requirement, that they would have someone with qualifications to satisfy any of those disputes that might arise, so. But he has held that position as long as it is existing here within the county.
Okay. Any further comments or discussions? Questions? Thank you for that information on that. Kathy, all those in favor of the Resolution 21-026, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five and zero. Please continue.
I guess I would address the Equalization Department. They have an opening for a, I think, a Level 1 assessor. My understanding is, is he's going to post that. I don't know what the verbiage you want for the resolution, but.
Just permission to hire.
Okay, so I'm motioning the position to hire that open position in the Equalization Department.
I'll support that.
Who did?
I got it.
You got it, thank you. I think everyone's received the emails, and is there any discussion?
Hey, the only discussion, I know Nick indicated in asking that, that possibly his Level 1 would apply for that Level 2. And so the only clarification, it really, really isn't necessary as part of the motion, just the clarification that if his current level, because it's a Level 2 that left, so if the Level 1 moves up to the Level 2, then the opening will be for a Level 1. If the Level 1 does not choose to apply and be hired for that Level 2 position based on qualifications or whatever, then it will actually be a Level 2 position.
Right. So he'll still be hired, it just might.
Right, it sends that, right. And it won't change the budget at all because it really doesn't matter what salary, because he has both positions budgeted, it just may be that the Level 1 moves, and then the vacancy will look up.
Correct. Okay, any further comment?
Oh, sorry. I was moving on. Can't move on yet.
All right, we'll vote on the motion to allow Nick to hire, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Please continue.
All right, I don't know if we want to have Stephanie address her position in the Treasurers Office.
Please.
I had my Assistant Head Bookkeeper resign last Thursday. I emailed Mark to see if I could post it right away, seeing as how most people don't come to the board anymore except for me. Anyhow, I need to post that position of Assistant Head Bookkeeper. It's a Level 5 position. Hiring rate is 1341, and I'm also going to go between that and 1551 depending on qualifications because it is a more qualified position, it's not our entry position. And I'm curious to what might happen if, if the minimum wage goes to 15 bucks an hour. I'm very concerned about that. So this person has been here for three years and was able to be hired at a different company in the county for 20-some dollars an hour. So I don't blame her for leaving, basically, but I'm going to miss her. She's done well for us, and it's going to be another transition for us because that make me having two new people, basically, and our business season is right now.
Yes, yes, that's the worst time of year for you.
It is, and it happens this time of year every single time. So anyhow, I request permission to post and then hire.
Commissioner Wiley, approval to support and accept recommendation of Treasurer Stephanie to hire.
Second.
For any counter question? His budget.
Stephanie, you said she was a Level 5 person, and how many of your staff were one of the levels?
I have a Level 5 at what I call the entry position, the position that everybody comes to. I started there position. Then Assistant Bookkeeper's also Level 5, and the Head Bookkeeper's a Level 6, which I believe should be Assistant 6 and Head Bookkeeper 7, but that's a big debate for years, so.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by, excuse me, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
And then I think I just have one other thing, and that is, it was brought to my attention that the W-2s that went out for some individuals were incorrect. The HSA designation that needs to be on there, essentially, it's not going to be a change in their taxes, it's just a matter of a reporting, kind of a reporting requirement on their 1040 when they file it. My, it was told to me that probably it affects about 60 people in the county at most, but those W-2Cs, which are corrected W-2s, should be out by the end of the week. And with that, I think that's it for me.
Any questions from commissioners? All right, thank you.
Brent. A couple of things to start off here, Human Services Department Committee. Commissioner Benzine and I received word last week that we were appointed to the Community Action Agency Board. We've got some orientations scheduled this week for that board, so our work there will be getting started. One of the members that, from Longaway County, the commissioner over there got word yesterday that her husband had passed, so Casey Bolton's, I don't know, Commissioner Wiley, if you had had any contact with her in the past. Also, our work through the FEMA Advisory Council, we had a meeting last week, Friday. Carrie mentioned this in her report, that the Senior Center was awarded $10,000, and that was through the 38 Phase funding through the FEMA Advisory Council for utility assistance. Domestic Harmony was awarded the balance of that funding that was received here in the county last fiscal year, $13,630, and that was for housing assistance. Those associations are still distributing and spending their COVID release money that they got earlier, that was primarily for food assistance on that. I do appreciate the Senior Center and the work that they've done, and the work that they've been able to do in the community, working with Region 2 Area Agency on Aging, you know, some of their limitations that they've had through the COVID restrictions of not being able to do onsite assessments, and what a benefit that is that we have with the Senior Center that can contract with Region 2 Area Agency on Aging and get out and, and do some of the onsite visit stuff. The Health Department Board is continuing to work, you know, the local health department has, has a vaccination clinic scheduled for tomorrow in Hillsdale County at the College Cereals Center in conjunction with Hillsdale College, or Hillsdale Hospital. And I'm quite sure that those appointments are already booked for that, and that's a first round vaccination clinic there. So that's, on those items, everybody should have received a revised copy of the proposed rules, procedure, and bylaws that we have been working on here since January. After I sent, and I have sent this to Tom Thompson for review, and I have not heard back from him since. back from him since I sent that to him. One correction that I would make, and you have a copy that was emailed to you on page four, number five. One of the things I picked up on with one of the other boards and committees that I've served on is, as opposed to referencing exactly what additional Robert Tools of Order we're using, just indicate that we're using the most recent revision. So if you would look in your copy there of the parentheses at the end of number five, I said, "Robert Tools of Order Newly Revised 12th Edition." And I, my proposal suggested would be we take that out because further on in here where we talk about Robert Tools, we just say that we're going to use the most recent revision of that. So hopefully trying to avoid having to make changes in other areas as years go by, whether it's those of us serving today or future commissioners that they don't have to go in and say, "Well, it said 12th edition here, so we need to update that." So I would propose taking that out. I know Commissioner Ingles has some concern about number six-four on the last item on the last page. Even Commissioner Benzinger may have some concern, as I do maybe, about the asset distribution or disposal language that's in here because of underneath 18, because we do have other adopted resolutions dealing with that, but not having time to integrate all of that stuff into this. My suggestion would be that we keep it as it is right now, and, you know, it is a fluid document that we can continue to work on and change as time goes on.
We do have an opportunity every year to modify it.
I would say we have an opportunity every meeting to modify it.
Very true.
Because it's a living document.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess you said you, excuse me, you've got it asked to the attorney, so I'm assuming we get back a clean copy for the next meeting that we could put into play.
Yeah, and, you know, right. The thing would be, do we want to discuss 6-4? And maybe we leave it in, but maybe some point of clarification on that. My concern is, and I do believe I shared with all of you the communication that I have received with, from Mr. Thompson regarding posting of county meetings, especially in regards to committee meetings, he had language there that in his view it's not required, but he would recommend it just so that if you had another commissioner show up, that you're, would never be questioned as to the legality of your actions that you took at that committee meeting. And so with that being said, if we would post those meetings, and if we as a, the members of that committee take minutes of that meeting, technically those have to be available to the public within a certain timeline for the open meeting set.
The reason I shake my head is, Jody's the one that's going to have to take the minutes, and, you know, I'm not, I'm just saying, with a Board of Five, your committee is normally two people.
Yeah.
You don't have a quorum. The likelihood of a third commissioner showing up is chance, and quite frankly, since we've been a Board of Five, there have been times where a third commissioner shows up and one of the, one of the three leaves. I mean, it's, you know, you avoid the problem.
And like I said, you know, we say we want legal advice. That is the legal advice from Tom Thompson, is that you post every meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and then that requires her to be at every meeting, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My concern in that posting is that, are we posting a meeting of the committee, or are we posting a meeting of the Board of Commissioners? So addressing Mr. Thompson's concern, that if we're posting a meeting of the committee, but a third commissioner shows up, we've in effect now created a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, so our posting is actually invalid, and so we violated, you created a conflict, and so now we, our posting is invalid, and we failed to post a meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So I think that those two things in conflict with each other help answer that question. And I would just add that with what Commissioner Wiley said, that we've been very, very good over, in the past, on self-policing that, in that if we do have, I recall some of those negotiations with the Sheriff's Department on previous contracts, that if you have a third person show up, it's like, we can't do that. And I, and I think that we are really aware of that, at least have been in the past, because we do want to have everything as transparent as possible. So I really think, I appreciate the concern, and I appreciate the Legal Council's advice, but I think that really those two things kind of go back and forth between the two, that we should post it, but if we're going to post it, we have to post it as a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, not as a committee, because if we create that conflict of, then we really haven't posted a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, we've posted a meeting of the committee. So it just nullifies the whole idea.
It becomes problematic. And I guess the other part of that is, is that transparency, if you will, just as Doug indicated earlier, they met with facilities yesterday, had a very open and relaxed meeting, but it was just the two commissioners and talking about the remodeling of the courthouse. So part of our procedural aspect here is committee reports. So, you know, I, for what it's worth, I avoid it.
The other issue that it also creates is that discussion email-wise or telephone-wise between the Chair and the Vice Chair, because technically, since you're allowing virtual meetings, technically you've created a meeting, because you're having discussion, you're deliberating towards a decision of the committee moving something forward to the whole...
Exactly, committee.
But, so the problems that it creates, I think, are greater than the issue that we're trying to solve.
Agreed.
I do have a comment on 6-4.
Please.
So there's two sentences that cause me issuing concern that I would like to delete, and they are sentence number one and sentence number two. Being no official report or release of any information concerning the proceedings of any committee of the Board shall be given by the committee chairperson or any member of his/her committee to the news media. Sentence two, this shall be done by the chairperson or in the absence of the chairperson and the vice chair after discussion with committee chairperson. My concern and issue is that I get phone calls frequently. I get asked for interview by newspaper, Hillsdale Collegium, most recently, and often, also radio. I have certain blogs that contact me, and I am inclined, as a commissioner, to feel free to speak, you know, when asked, on issues in particular that are public information issues rather than confidential. As a commissioner, that's where my mindset is going to be, that if it's public knowledge and public information, I will have the pleasure of answering questions and speaking with local media. And so I would like those two statements that are, I feel restrictive to me being able to perform my job as a commissioner, I would like those two sentences strict, and I think that the sentence of all other information to be released regarding negotiations will be released by the Board's Legal Council is appropriate and should stay.
Comments?
You know, my only comment is, is that the, I believe within our board rules, the role of the chairperson with what we describe is, is the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners states the official positions of the county. However, that I always have had concerns because we are all independently elected. So in other words, that we speak for our office, and so placing a restriction upon voicing an opinion, whether it be something that we do in this room or something that we do with our committees, is really restricting us being representatives for our constituents. And so I guess I'm really comfortable with striking a whole item, because as far as the negotiations, I don't think that we've ever had a case where our attorney has ever issued a statement, and very honestly, we don't talk about those things. So I would just be comfortable with striking 6-4 completely and just removing it.
Thoughts, Kathy?
I guess I look at this as an informational type of bullet for new commissioners. For someone who hasn't served on a board before, to kind of give them an idea of what things you do discuss, what things you discuss in this room, what things you discuss in an interview maybe, and not, not that you're getting permission per se, but it's more of a guideline. And so maybe this isn't the right language, maybe we need to get together and come up with something, because I think this, again, is more of a guideline for us to look at. You know, if you have a question, you know, you get, somebody from the paper contacts, it's like, oh, you're kind of like a deer in the headlights. What exactly can I say? Again, I am all for transparency. I mean, I'm not, it's not that I'm trying to hide anything, that's not the point. So to me, it's more of a guideline to say, okay, this is maybe how you handle that. So I think, I think there should be something in there, you know, I don't know if that's the exact right, correct wording.
Well, I would concur with that, Kathy, and I would, I would only add that eight, well, nine years ago, when I came on board, there was a comment made to me that it, that part of the intention of this at some point in time was to have a single voice as a spokesperson so that we didn't have five different versions of the same item, much like the fish story that I told Brad, Brad told Brent, Brent told Kathy, and next thing you know, when Doug gets the story, that fish was 20 pounds when it was only a two-pound bluegill, you know? So that was what was explained to me nine years ago. But whatever the Board wants to put on there, I think Kathy's right, there could be some better language. Might be something to reach out to Tom, because he has done enough of these, I'm sure he would have some language as far as how to handle that, so...
Mr. Chair, speaking to Commissioner Smith's concerns, when I first came on the Board, Commissioner Watsonheiser had a really, really nice board orientation that he put together, and I know that, I believe that when you first came on Board, because you were our only new commissioner at that point, I believe that I went through that with you as Vice Chair at that time. So I guess that what I would encourage perhaps, and I appreciate your point, because it's a whole lot, it's the proverbial drinking from a fire hose when you first come on, and that, one of the things that we might want to have management personnel look at, not really designate anywheres who's going to do that, but that we just simply say that, you know, somewheres, that for new members of the Board of Commissioners, that an orientation will be conducted, and that we develop, maybe look for, because I think that there was actually a three-ring notebook on the thing that, that went back to Commissioner Watsonheiser. So that might be a good idea to, you know, formulate something. It probably would be a really good idea if included in that, our employee policy. You know, we have, we have a employee policy that we have all of our new hires review and sign, and I know that North Adams Village Council, they do that with all our council members. They have them review the same policy that the older employees do, and so maybe, you know, something, at least adding that to that orientation, that might not be a bad idea. I don't know that we necessarily have to have a policy other than that, you know, there will be an orientation conducted for new commissioners, but I think your point is well-taken. I just don't know that we need to phrase it in the manner that it currently is.
Right, so I would strike 6-4 as written and add the orientation program and process with proper wording. I would be fine with that, but I think the way it's worded currently, I cannot in good faith or good conscience...
So Kathy and I will get together between now and our next meeting and reword that, and...
And it may fit better someplace else, if that's the direction we're going to go in, but...
Because, right, where it's at is underneath the committee, and that may not be the best spot for that. We may need to come back underneath, up underneath just Section 1 or somewhere else.
Thank you.
Anything else on the rules?
Just, other than that, it's looking really good. I appreciate both of your work on this, so I think it's going to be a significant improvement, and I think, thank you both.
Okay. All right. Zach?
That completes my report, sir.
Okay, thank you. Brad, you're up then.
Okay, I just had a comment for Commissioner Wiley. As far as for Human Services, with your role in the Health Department and other things you mentioned about the vaccine clinic, just one of the scuttlebutt things that I'm hearing out there from the public is, is this push to get, you know, first round of dose of vaccine, and I know just from my own role in EMS, that if they get one dose, they reserve a second, a second dose. But there is that rumor monster out there that there, people are not going to be able to get their second dose, so if you could just, just pass along that that rumor is out there, and perhaps maybe if the agency could maybe hit upon that, and just to kind of reassure people, because especially in the older population, I had an opportunity yesterday, I was doing a service call, and there was a couple of people who weren't related, they were friends that were there, and they were talking about, that one of them had gotten their vaccination yesterday, and the other one was still trying to get their first, signed up for their first one, and they were expressing some, and I mean, it's not the first time that I have heard that...
Every communication that we've had from the Health Director in regards to that is, when somebody signs up for their first dose, when the Health Department has allocated their first dose, they're in essence guaranteed to be allocated the equal amount of second doses, the three-week timeframe, whatever that required timeline is for each, whether it's the Moderna or the Pfizer vaccine, that, and those people, when they schedule that first dose, yes, they're automatically scheduled in to the second-dose clinic for when those second doses are to be administered.
So you're being scheduled for both points?
I, like I say, I fully understand that, I'm just saying...
And I got a letter from the state, I'd have to go back about four or five weeks, but it actually came via Doug through emergency management, but the state indicated that no one should be sitting on vaccine, holding it back, because once you use that first dose allotment, that second dose allotment is already booked into the system. So the state's coordinating that, you know, but yeah, that, that has not been a problem, but we can certainly mention it to Becky, so... So, and I'll certainly mention it to John Rabberson at the hospital, so.
I think they're doing, the hospital's done a really good job. The Health Department's done a really good job on getting that information out. But I just, as a healthcare provider, I just want to get ahead of that because particularly in that older population, I mean, they're really, really concerned. And so especially seemingly those 55 to 64-year-olds. Because, you know, it's like the 65-year-olds, they've got the, and older, they've got the blessed status because they're in that first group and there's, you know, that group of people out there that they're really wanting to get signed up and in line and there's a lot of anticipation, so. Like I say, I understand completely what is actually going on, but I just wanted the feedback that there is kind of that chatter out there. So just to maybe reassure those.
And per capita, we have more vaccinations have been issued in Hillsdale County as opposed to Branch and St. Joseph County of the, in our tri-county Health Departments. There's been more per capita doses or vaccines issued here than there has been in the other two counties that our Health Department serves.
And Branch and Hillsdale are very similar. It's within maybe 100 doses, but we're far ahead of St. Joe.
And we can say, we can thank the college for that.
On a per capita basis, as Brent's saying, we're even ahead of counties like Oakland, which is somehow insane.
Well, there's a whole issue in Oakland. Their medical, their medical control has been big as to who can vaccinate. Yeah, that's a whole other.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. So anyways, please continue with your report.
All right, very good. Let me get back to that tab.
Can I just say, just for clarification for those who are listening, that the Pfizer is a three-week wait, the Moderna is a four-week wait. So that, that way there's no confusion out there.
That is correct.
Okay.
And Johnson &amp; Johnson isn't so good.
Johnson &amp; Johnson's what?
Not so good on it, they said on the news last night. They have some issues with it.
Yeah.
But there's no Johnson &amp; Johnson approved yet, so.
Right, the only two that are approved are the Pfizer and the Mo here. All right, I would like to begin my report by introducing Magistrate Laura Ray. Laura, welcome to the Board of Commissioners. If you come up and say hi and tell everyone a little bit about yourself.
Thank you, it's a privilege to be here. I know most of you by name only, some of you personally. I have lived in Hillsdale County since 2007. My husband and I moved from Tulsa, Oklahoma. Been a member of the Michigan since 2008 and an active practitioner in the county since 2014. Many of you may know Tim Dixon. He and I worked together for years. I was first an associate with him and then a co-member. I got to know Judge Steiberson, now Judge Steiberson, when she was a chief assistant prosecuting attorney. So that's how I first became involved in the, I guess, the legal profession here in the county. My current role is as a court administrator in the district court. The current court administrator, Christine Auer, will be retiring after about 42 years of service. She is definitely a hard act to follow. And so it's very much my privilege to be there and working in that role. I'm excited to take on new responsibilities as an attorney magistrate and look forward to serving the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. All right, so I met with the sheriff last Friday. We talked about his application. At our last meeting, I mentioned the Triple A Grant. He is going to apply for that for some laser speed measuring equipment. They will be both handheld and have some antennas that will mount in their vehicles so they can either use those as portable or as part of their vehicles. In response to that, I did write a letter, I shared that, that bolted share it, I signed. And we went ahead because the sheriff wanted to move ahead with that grant application. There is no match involved and so consequently that he would not be required to bring that grant back to the Board of Commissioners. He has talked to Derek about it as far as, to make sure that Derek is aware. And I also did clarify with him because the sheriff did express some concerns about why he should have to ask anyone in regards to a no-match grant. And I did clarify with him, one of the big concerns that Derek has expressed is he's ended up having to do the compliance and reporting even if there is no match. And it's just created, I won't say a unnecessary work, but work that he had not budgeted into his time for. And so I did clarify with the sheriff that that was the reason that the resolution was passed by the previous Board of Commissioners for those grant reviews. Obviously, if there is a match required, the resolution is very clear. Those need to come back so that we can make sure that we have budgeting for that. But the bigger issue is, is we need to make sure that at least Derek is aware of that. And that's why it specifically says any grant has to be at least run by the Finance Director. I also did have an opportunity to see the new body cameras. Because we have a lower jail population last year, the sheriff had some additional dollars in his budget, in last year's budget because he wasn't feeding as many inmates. And so consequently, he did utilize that money. So they will have old dash cams that will activate when they turn on the overhead or emergency lights on their vehicles. So that's all reported. And then all of their officers will have a body camera as well. If you don't see those on the officers, it's because they actually have a separate camera, which is quite small, working in public safety. I see them and they're about like my fireplace. Most of the body cams are about the size of my fireplace. You're in the awareness center here like this. The ones that we are deploying with our Sheriff's Department, they're actually a pretty small, probably about the size of a half-dollar. And then there's a cable that runs, and this device will actually be on the backside of their vest. And then those will be downloaded. One of the concerns previously when we had talked about body cameras years ago, when they were starting to come out and become widely accepted, was data storage. And so what these do is, is as part of the agreement, they immediately go up into the cloud. And so we don't have, we're not physically retaining that. Every night when the officer or every day when they come in, I'll say night shift officer, those cameras will then be downloaded into the cloud so that that information will be available. Also, I did get a tour of the offices, they have the jail. The front offices, they actually look pretty sharp. That 1980s kind of yellow and green is all gone from there. It's still back in the cells though. But out in the front, the sheriff has done a really nice job in getting those off, making them lighter and brighter. I mean, it's concrete block construction, it's a jail, okay? It's a correctional facility. But it really does, it looks a lot nicer than it did previously. So I do have to compliment him on that. I did see the new gate, had an opportunity to see, go through it when I went back to the cell box. Just a couple of other things. The jail census was in the high 50s. They can hold 80-some, so we're well below at this point. And also just one other note that we do have a nurse out at the jail. That was a new addition that was put in a few years ago. And they are doing in-house their own COVID testing. So they're using the rapid, it's about a 20, 22 minutes to get a return back on it. And so anyone coming into the jail, they're COVID tested before they're put into the population there. And then they're also able to do that with their own personnel as well. So that's nice to have that asset, that we're not having to go out for that. And we're able to do that other than supplies, we already have that employed. I did participate last week in the statewide EMS COVID call. We continue to evolve the protocols for EMS. One of the discussions we continue to have is what happens with a cardiac arrest. Historically, if we get return of spontaneous circulation on the scene, that person is obviously transported. A lot of times though, if we're doing CPR, that we transport, if there's a possibility they have downfall on time information, that patient is transported. What's happened because of the concerns about aerosolizing a number of personnel in the back of an ambulance, if we don't get return of spontaneous circulation on a scene, those patients are transported. And so basically that code is terminated on a scene. One of the concerns has been if you're running license hirings to the hospital and you lose pulses again, the number of personnel in the back of the ambulance. And so basically that, the protocol is one person back there. So you open up the door, you actually stop. Where I've done CPR going down the road a lot of times as a firefighter, helping crews or working myself. Now you stop and everybody but the person actually doing chest compression stays inside of the ambulance. And again, if you get pulses back and they continue on, if you dump, then the code's called there on the scene. So those continue to evolve. And so a lot of things happening with that. We're also doing some things statewide in regards to vaccinations to allowing some additional personnel to do those COVID vaccinations to get some additional personnel out there in the field. I'm also working currently on how county-based fire EMS services, medical first responder agencies, not ambulance ones, are resupplied for items that they use on calls. Traditionally, it's been if you use a C collar, a fire gets there on an accident or an older person's fallen. Protocol says if anyone over 65 has had a fall or they have to have a C collar in place. And the ambulance company, they resupply it. If you use a nasal cannula or a couple rolls of buck, they just resupply. But evidently that there has been recently some things that have been resupplied in the past that are no longer being resupplied. And so that's creating some financial pressure on those local fire departments that do have medical first responders. And so I've been trying to find out what the policy is. And the answer is, there is one. Surprisingly, so I actually asked Carl Rock, who is the South Central Vice President for Emergency Health Partners, which surrounds us with Lenawey Community Ambulance to the east, Jackson Community Ambulance and Albion Community Ambulance to the north and Life Care to the west. There are no policies in those counties. There have been no formal, it's just been a, if we want to use a gender-specific term, a gentle persons agreement between the ambulance companies and the fire departments. So I'm, again, I'm researching that and so hoping to bring to the ambulance association so that we can actually have a formal policy in place because we've got county dollars that flow to the ambulance association and we just want to make sure that we're supporting those fire departments as well as the ambulance companies in a manner that everybody understands. I'm not saying that we're asking, you know, going to be asking for anything more or anything less. I just want a universal policy so that a fire department in Montgomery and a fire department in Moscow are operating under the same rules. So I just wanted to let you know that we, I am looking at that.
Commissioner Benzine, just so I understand, the resupply for the fire departments who have emergency personnel comes from the ambulance service?
Correct, correct.
But it's a gentleman, gentle person's agreement?
Exactly, so there is nothing formal. So you might have one ambulance agency that is replying, replacing airways that are used on scene. You may have another that is not replacing those airways. You may have one agency who is resupplying oxygen. You may have another agency who is not resupplying oxygen. So what happens is, is then you have fire departments that are wondering why are they doing it over here but they're not doing it over there? So that's why I'm just looking for some clarification. So everybody understands these are the rules. So I don't care what the rules are, that's a decision that they need to make. I just want everybody to understand, these are what we are doing. And then the only thing that I have from my townships, about halfway through the township cycle, is seemingly there's a lot of citizen concerns out there about the roads. That Woodbridge Township, there was actually a group of Amish and some English that came to the township meeting to address some concerns about some roads down in the Austin area. And at Adams last night, there was a gentleman who actually has sustained a significant amount of damage to his garage because of water coming off of the road. And he's been trying for more than a year to get his driveway culvert basically pressure washed out. The Road Commission has got a truck that they can do that with. And so they do it with drains as well. And so he's been trying and so he's, like I say, he's actually sustained some damage because of that water flow. So just, it's one of the issues that I'm seeing out from my townships. So that concludes my report unless there are questions.
Couple of questions. One is the Road Commission, I am meeting them Thursday. Is there information you can give me on that?
I would be happy to, actually, Road Commissioner Weiler was at Adams last night.
Okay.
And so he was at Woodbridge, however, he was not there when the group. So they didn't interact, the gentleman that was at Adams last night, they actually had an opportunity to exchange contact information. And so he was going to actually go out and look at that site and see what the issue was and do some follow-up. But if you would pass right on, I would be happy after.
Send me a quick email if you would on that.
Not a problem.
And then the other question I have is on the body cam, storage in the cloud, capacity and time of storage. I understand that even if it's in the cloud, there's still at some point capacity challenges. I'm wondering how long is the data stored? And you may not know, and is our IT department, is Dave Holcomb in on this?
Yes, yeah, David has been involved with it. Actually, the big thing is a process called eDiscovery. And we, everything that we do electronically that eDiscovery applies to, and there is a statutory requirement of how long that information has to be retained. So yes, David has been working with them. And we actually do have a formal policy that goes back to my previous time on the board that was created on how long we retain those electronic records, so.
They do, my question's.
Certainly, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for all that. Doug Sanford just sent me a notice that if anyone's interested, the governor is going to have another update on the pandemic at 1:30 today. So if you want to tune in for that. Read Terry Hesterland's report and I forwarded it to you so you've got it. But Terry's been trying to give me a written report so that I can share with you what's going on in medical care. First of all, he says, "Weekly COVID testing of staff and residents continue. All resident tests have returned negative for the eighth week in a row. One staff member is off work related to an outside exposure. We have held two vaccination clinics. A third clinic for residents and staff is scheduled for Tuesday, February 23rd. 217 individuals have received two doses of vaccine. Roughly 51% of the staff have received the vaccine and only a few residents elected not to receive the vaccine. The vaccine is not mandatory, however, all staff are highly encouraged to receive the vaccine." I will ad lib here for a minute. I know Terry held some informational-type classes for his staff so that they better understood more about the vaccine. So with the attempt of getting more vaccinated. I'll continue with his report. "The facility is prepared to begin indoor in-person visits pending," and he emphasizes pending, "an official county risk level change from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid. The county's risk level is below 10%. That's also been commonly referred to as the positivity rate. So we are below 10%. However, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid have yet to change our risk level from an E down to a D. And D or better is where we can do the in-person visitation. There are some discrepancies between the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and CMS regarding our official county level, our risk level. This is due to reporting timeframe differences. CMS uses a two-week reporting timeframe and the state uses seven days." CMS uses a two-week reporting timeframe and the state uses seven days. According to the state of Michigan this morning, Hillsdale County's risk level is 8.5 and we anticipate a level change at any time. Policy and procedures are in place to safely allow scheduled visits as soon as we receive word from CMS." And I know in my phone conversation with him yesterday, they are actually starting an appointment list and scheduling visits by appointment. So if you have a relative or a loved one that you want to set up an appointment time to visit, they have started that process pending approval. So that is that.
Quick question.
Go ahead, Doug.
Please. Thanks, Commissioner Wylie. You mentioned that we're below 10% currently, at 8.5% in the county.
Correct.
I recall at our last meeting that we talked about 10% threshold regarding the courts.
Correct.
And so how will that impact the courts? Have you heard that yet?
I was going to get there, but you're okay. You just got me jumped ahead.
Sorry.
So, but that's fine. That's a valid question. So I have had communication with the chief judge. And unless Laura's going to correct me, we have not heard back from the state yet.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you, Laura. We're waiting on word back from the state, but the chief judge did submit her request to move to Phase Two, which Phase Two, one of the requirements was is to be below that 10%.
I'm sorry, I believe that has been approved now that I understand.
Well, the plan has been approved, but we haven't moved to Phase Two yet.
I believe there is an LAO approved moving to Phase Two. I can get back to you on that.
Okay, if you would please, and then I'll let the rest of the board know. But yeah, the 10% was the threshold and Judge Elizabeth did submit that, I believe, Thursday afternoon, if I recall.
Thank you, didn't mean to jump in.
No, you're okay. You just moved my notes a little bit. That's all good, all good. Medical examiner and I talked last night for about 20 minutes. Dr. Casson and I have had the pleasure of communicating over the last three or four years since we went into, since Hillsdale and Lenawee County went into basically a joint venture where we, joint services, if you will, as far as medical examiner services. He's helped initiate a program within Hillsdale County. We have what is referred to as MEI's, medical examiner investigators. I don't know currently how many we have trained in the county. I know we've got at least a couple, two or three. And they do work back and forth. So some of the ones that are trained in Lenawee, and what the MEI does is come to that scene and they have iPads, they have iPhones, they have the whole, there's actually like a briefcase, if you will, for them to take accurate notes. And they're in communication with Dr. Casson from the scene. So he doesn't have to physically go to the field on all these cases. On some, he does, but for the vast majority, it's the MEI that is on the scene. And the MEIs are trained, most of them have medical background of some time. And so the whole program has worked well. I got a report that I'll share with the rest of you. I believe I got it yesterday and I haven't had time to email it out to everyone, but it'll show you how many cases we've had in the last month. And it's also got the bill attached. So they bill us for the autopsies and the services. But our, for historic perspective, before this, we had a medical examiner that the county hired that we had trouble getting a hold of on a too-frequent basis. And autopsies were sent out of county, all the way down to Lucas County, Ohio. There were problems sometimes with getting those results and sometimes with getting that information. And so we, about three, four years ago, we ventured into this joint venture with Lenawee County and quite frankly, it's worked real well. Dr. Casson will be here, whatever, the second, I think it's the 23rd, the second meeting in March, to give us an update and to talk to the new board. He wanted to meet all of you. So that's kind of an update on that. The VA board meeting met yesterday. They're continuing to help several veterans in the county, you know, with grocery needs or fuel, heat.
Property tax.
Property tax.
Thank you. That was one of the ones that we reviewed yesterday. Yep. So once again, just for an informational piece, they have the monies they work with as a soldiers and sailors relief fund, which this year, I believe, about $153,000 more or less was allocated. And Renee and Dolly use that money to help the veterans of the county. That money could be assessed at 1/10 of a mil. Hillsdale County has never assessed that. We've just taken the 1/10 of a mil out of the general fund budget and allocated it to the soldiers and sailors relief fund. The other funds that she has is the burial fund and, help me out, there's one of those.
There's an independent board, isn't there? There's two over and above. You have the soldiers and sailors relief and then there's, isn't there another board beyond that?
Another what?
There's two boards, aren't there, that allocate dollars?
Well.
There's the actual veterans board and then there's another board?
Not locally.
Okay.
I mean, the other board that you might be thinking of is there's a Michigan Veterans Trust Fund.
Okay.
That we can request money out of. But that's become so problematic that Renee doesn't monkey with it. The burial fund is $300 to assist widows or dependents with burial of their deceased veteran or deceased loved one. There was two burials that we approved assistance on yesterday, but most of the ones we're dealing with are World War II veterans or Korean veterans, Korean war. But World War II veterans are fast leading us, unfortunately. So, well, the other thing that I wanted to report on that is there was a, one of the things, and I know everyone's aware that past Drain Commissioner Bill Ward passed away due to COVID complications. And one of the family's requests was that donations could be given to the Veterans Affairs towards the VA Scholarship Fund. And the scholarship fund, we give out to seniors in the spring of the year that are either children of veterans or grandchildren of veterans. And we've been able to give out quite a few scholarships over the last several years. Roughly $2,000 has been donated to that scholarship fund in the name of Bill Ward. So, and Bill did serve on the VA board at one point in time as well. So that was nice that people have donated. And you can still donate to the scholarship fund anytime if anyone is interested in doing that to help the youth of the county. I was asked about, and I believe it was Brad asked me about the contracts through the sheriff's department. I've got signature pages with me. Brad and I have got a meeting with the sheriff later. Those signature pages have been signed by myself and the sheriff. I've got to hand them over to Lieutenant Stiderson and TJ. And they'll get them all signed and then I'll get them sent out to, you know, a complete copy to everybody.
I had just asked, you know, we had got them last year when they approved those, you know, the current, what was the current copy and then the revisions to that? I was just wanting to see a merged copy of that, that language.
So that'll be forthcoming, hopefully within the week. So it's been a work in progress. I actually joked with Jason yesterday that there was about 50 emails back and forth just making sure that final version had everything plugged in. And it wasn't just, it was both groups, you know, there's two contracts out there, one with the supervisors and one with the non-supervisors. The other thing that, and I'll send this out here again, this just came last night, but total vaccines given by all providers, Branch County Moderna, 3789, Branch County Pfizer, 1084, Hillsdale County Moderna, 1765, Hillsdale County Pfizer, 3761, St. Joseph County Moderna, 3512, and St. Joseph County Pfizer, 1206. So to Brent's point earlier, proportionally, we're ahead of, slightly ahead of Branch County and definitely ahead of St. Joseph County.
And one thing I was going to ask back to you about is, you know, that doesn't, to me, that doesn't give a breakdown as to are these total vaccines doses issued or are these, you know, just people that have received a first and second, you know, first and second dose on those?
That is total number.
Okay.
So I have talked to, those are the total numbers that each in, each county has received either via the hospital or via the health department. So that is a total number.
Thank you.
And supposedly, here again, you know, we're waiting on the state, but supposedly the state keeps telling us our numbers of total vaccine are going to increase. So that's all I have unless there's a question or two. I'll send that full report out to you later as well as the medical examiner's report.
Thank you. No questions.
I don't have any questions for you, but if nobody else has questions, can I make a couple of comments that I should have probably made it under my?
Go right ahead, Kathy.
Okay. As speaking, I did go to two township meetings last night. And I know that one of the townships with the road commission, they have a concern about their upkeep of their gravel roads. They don't feel they're following policy. I know Garrett Moneger was at that meeting and those concerns were voiced to him as well. The other thing that they are concerned with is that normally the townships meet with, the township boards meet with the county road commission board about planning what the summer projects are going to be, road projects. And that's usually done in January, that's been postponed to maybe March. They're concerned about that. They're trying to set their budgets and trying to figure that out. So that was their concern. The other thing I guess I would mention is that we all got the email from Nick Wheeler on the equalization department that county or that the township board reviews are supposed to be virtual. I do know that in the two townships I visited, their assessor is definitely demanding that they be virtual. So any board review for the March board review, things will either be emailed in or called in, that it should not be in person.
And I do believe Nick had indicated in that email that there's supposed to be some guidance issued today by the Michigan Tax Commission, Michigan?
Tax Tribune.
Tax Tribune, yeah, regarding that.
Right. And there will be postings, but I thought I would mention it so that again, if people are listening on web apps or whatever, they're aware that board review in March should not be in person.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
If I just might add to that, one of my concerns, because it definitely affects my district, Commissioner Wiley's district, and probably a portion of Commissioner Wiley's, we have a significant Amish population in Hillsdale County. And having been the township supervisor and secretary to the board of review for four years, I believe that by creating a virtual-only environment, that we are excluding the opportunity of a group of people within the state of Michigan because we are not the only county. Clare County has a very significant Amish population. St. Joseph County has a very significant Amish population. And I think that we are creating a barrier to those people to have that appeals ability to appear before those boards of review. But, and I realize that's not our action that's doing that, that's the state tax commission that's doing that. But I do think that, you know, we need to be a voice for that population because they do have some very strongly held religious beliefs that, you know, whatever those are, you know, I mean, there's people out there that practice Santeria too. And so, you know, we have to understand there's people that might have religious beliefs that are different than our own or conflict with the way that we do things. And we have to do everything we can to accommodate those people.
I would agree. I just would also like to point out that virtual does not mean computer-only, that they can use the telephone. Again, just wanted that information out there.
Yeah.
But it is a concern. It is a concern when that group would prefer not to, you know, I do know they use the phone, I don't know how much they use computers.
Is there some mailing also on that? Like a mailer?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
And I wouldn't even have to go Amish, I could just go to my father and he's not going to participate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So since we're kind of doing additional business, I'm going to kind of flip public comment and additional business. So we're going to run additional business right now. Anything additional?
I do have anything else to add this time.
Okay.
I just, you and I have talked about this and I would like, not at this meeting for time's sake, but maybe an update.
We are.
Or Stephanie's going to give us an update.
We are. But we're going to go into closed session for that.
Yeah.
And we'll do it immediately following public comment.
And that'd be an update on current legal.
Correct.
Issues regarding the county.
I'm good. I will try to pay attention to the.
You're okay. Mr. Ingles, anything to add? Okay. Now we'll jump back to public comment. Anyone wish to address at this time?
Hi, Chris Myers. Superior Thomas, I want to thank Commissioner Benzine, Commissioner Smith for relaying the problems that the township and residents had with the road commission. Hopefully, Commissioner Ingles will relay that to the road commissioners. Some of the things that didn't get addressed was the township board requested some information as far as projects that were done last year in accordance along with the state revenue fund that the county road commission got from the state due to township projects. Those things weren't brought to the township board as was asked by at least my supervisor. I talk to my supervisor probably twice a week concerning the problems with the maintenance of the county roads that's happened over 20-year period. And by that meaning, the way that they're graded, if you look on their policies and procedures, it says that they bring the berms in each spring, each year. Now they're talking about last night that they got a ditch digger to clean out the ditches. If they was maintaining the berms on a yearly basis in the spring, you wouldn't have the sod that grows up alongside the road, the leaves in that major for not being graded or graded in to the road to do road condition. And that was one of the things that I brought up last night over a 20-year period. So this isn't so much as one person's problem, it's the whole mission problem of not doing their due diligence on how they manage to take the road financially or equipment-wise. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else want to talk at this time? My bad, I thought she left. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Chris and I went through that some years back, probably five years now, been working on that project to do the roads. There's no reason why we can't do the adjustments. We've talked our heads off trying to do that. I brought it to this board and not you guys, of course, the other previous. And we've tried and tried and it seems like it's never-ending. It's never, never getting a good answer. We don't need to remove all this stuff on the side called berms. We can utilize those berms. We found a new way, a project that was done in Wisconsin. Fantastic. Most of their roads are gravel. And we found a good way. Nobody wanted to hear it down at the road commission. I don't know what John is all about, but he seemed to think he's the only one. The other was that Chris here tried to explain a lot of things at their commission and pretty much John just turned it down. We still have the videos, which they sent us from Wisconsin, how to get those roads done. done. It's a great accomplishment, it's a great thing to have, but we've done it, and done it, and done it, and done it. And so, when are we gonna, you know, get the road commission? Well, now we have Mr. Lenninger, that will be there in present, and I think he's gonna do something, you know, a little bit different.
Just for clarification, not, not this, Mr. Lenninger.
No, sir.
You guys use the younger and the older.
No, the wiser, I should put it that way, of the Lennigers. His president, the road commission. But, no, other than that, what's transpired here, I've had a, an incident that had taken place here with the security, and some of the things that was just, you know, out of line. But, it is what it is. But, I understand there was a comment made by the young lady named Renee, down there at the VA, and if, if, if they're, and another gal, if they're so fearful of anybody roaming these halls, they shouldn't be here. I mean, a veteran, he shouldn't be here. But the next I would like to ask is one more favor, is look at Dave Holcomb's situation he's got here, and he's trying to make adjustments, and he's been trying. The lack of a little bit of funds, you suggested go look at the site, you know, the budgeting and such. And, so, I just think that needs to be a little bit more funding towards what Dave can get accomplished. And I think the cameras that we can get in the building should have been in place the first time, when the building was being done, instead of waiting for it, but I hope that maybe we can do something so, you know, everybody's got some eyes on something that's going on in here. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else wish to address the board? Thank you all for coming.
I'm virtual.
I would like to...
Virtual.
I don't see anybody there.
Oh, check the virtual.
There is nobody else.
Nobody? Okay. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, attorney-client privilege.
And I, and I forget the exact statute number.
You don't have to cite the statute.
Okay.
Sorry, they use statutes.
Move to go to closed session at, I'm gonna, if it's okay, at eleven forty, with, that gives us a six-minute recess to use...
If you're going into closed session, you can't immediately have a recess.
Okay.
You gotta do it.
All right. Move it, move to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege regarding, from legal counsel.
Second.
And we're good to go.
Well, just a minute here. Start meeting.
You can get my eye all the way from the back.
I did hear you.
I was caffeinated.
I don't... Have we got any participants?
There are no participants.
Did we let the public know out there?
There was nobody in the hall.
Nobody in the hall. All right. We're good to go.
Well, Stephanie, I guess...
I wonder if this is still going out on YouTube.
YouTube is shut down.
It should be...
It should be up. Yeah, the stream should be back up.
You can do what you want. They just can't do a closed session.
Yeah, there's no... Jordi and I were just looking at the reasons for closed session and we cannot because we haven't gotten attorney involved yet. This doesn't really fit any of the criterias.
It should be up.
I am not...
Yeah, we are back on YouTube.
It is back on? Okay. Well, with that said, if we're back on YouTube, I'm not comfortable. But I'll leave that decision up to you, Stephanie. This is a situation that she has informed me of. And I'll leave it at that. But it is sensitive in nature. Let me put it that way. So that's why we were hoping to go into closed session.
Potentially criminal.
Potentially. Potentially. So we can do this one or two ways or maybe one or three ways. We can either say it now and it will become public record. We can wait until we get further into the process or...
My part of further in the process if we're mulling over all we can.
Yep.
It's given later and later and later.
Yep. Time to move to the next step.
Unfortunately, the place that I need to get information off is closed until the 18th. That's too long.
Okay.
Is that MMR or...?
No.
No.
It's kind of... We've never had this before and I don't like to position it in with it.
Let me ask him a question. If we are right in moving forward, it's not an issue. If we are wrong in moving forward until we get more information, I do not want to move forward. I would want to wait.
No, we've got to move forward. Based on... Yeah. Based on what Stephanie and I know, we really need it. It's time sensitive.
It'll be a week tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I hope I...
If we are in a time sensitive position, I really think that we need to be aware of it. The clock is ticking.
Individually?
I think individually and I think either... I think via phone. Quite frankly, it doesn't need to be a long conversation.
Don't just pop in my office, I'll tell you and goodbye.
Well, that's fine too. If everybody's got time to pop in there for a couple minutes, one at a time because we don't want to create an incident. But Stephanie can certainly let you know it's going to take maybe all of two minutes to tell you the nuts and bolts and then move on. Because this is... I think the other part of this, and just so everybody understands, especially since we're back on YouTube, this is not something we want to go public yet because of the pending...
Potential.
Possible criminal implications. Okay? And that's saying more than I want to say. But you know, the more information you throw out there, it complicates things or potentially complicates things.
I get it.
So with that said, I will adjourn the meeting and y'all take a moment to go next door for a couple minutes and she'll quickly brief you.
Two of you can go. You can have three. You can have two go.
Well, that's true too.
I won't say it four times.
Yeah, there you go. That'll save you half the time. So you two are first. Go.
I'm going to the head, so you...
Okay. You two go first. Because then Brad and I got ahead. Brad, I'll just sit tight waiting on you because we got to go to the sheriff's department.
Oh, my.